If there's no objections as Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting, as many of you may have noticed on the last regular meeting we had, or the last meeting we had recently. One of the items that we never got to was the introduction of the Springfield Housing Trust Fund. And a, my colleague, Councilor Letterman, had graciously forwarded to all the city councils through the proper channels. I'm not, I'm gonna allow him to kind of delve into it. Just want to give a little quick background. This is an ideal that Jesse, myself and others have been talking about for over two years. It started pre-COVID. And it was a part of a discussion. I remember having Jesse and myself having lunch with Peter Gallerardi, former director, but is now known as Wayfinder, and is at half a couple of years ago. And of course, we hear from our constituents and the people around the city, and we know how important housing is, and the investment in the housing stock in the city. So this is something that we've been working on, distracted a little bit because of COVID. But I want to express my appreciation for the receptive ear, about all the members of the administration, including TJ Plant, Mayor Sarno, our Head of Economic Development, Mr. Tim Sheehan, and, and the Law Department, who also at different parts, different points along the path, helped that and helped us get us to this point. That being said, this is being presented as by myself, Vice President Letterman, Counselor Mal Le Brown, and our President of the City Council, Marcus Williams, as the authors of this proposed ordinance or proposed plan. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Letterman, and let him kind of introduce the intricate detail, intimate details of what we're trying to proposing to do. And Counselor Letterman?
Thank you so much Chairman Edwards, and thank you Counselor Govan and Counselor Perez for being here. I'm not surprised to see the two of you here because I know how much you understand the importance of housing in the work that both of you do every day. And we really appreciate that. You know, I've been, I've been very proud to stand with both of you before we were all elected around housing issues in the city, and you know, hopeful that you will join us as co-sponsors of this legislation and hopefully help us shepherd it to passage. We're also joined by Amanda Pham, who is the Executive Director of the Springfield Redevelopment Authority, and we'll talk about their role in just a minute. And we're also joined now, I just was forwarding him the link a moment ago, by Attorney Steve Roach, who's an Associate City Solicitor and has been instrumental in helping us to craft the actual legal language for the ordinance to make sure that we're in line with state law and our own local ordinances. So I have shared with, with members of the council, as Counselor Edwards mentioned, a fact sheet on this that just breaks down some of the key details of the Housing Trust Fund and what it would be able to do. Essentially, as Counselor Edwards foreshadowed, we all have heard from residents about many of the challenges they face with housing, whether that is homeowners having trouble really financing some of the major exterior and foundational repairs that they have with their property, to the fact that we now know we are 10,000 units of housing short at every level here in the Pioneer Valley with much of that concentrated in the city of Springfield, and that is contributing to the very high cost of housing that we are starting to see rise, and the cost of rents increasing as well. And we know that from the Wayfinders and Donahue Institute study that was done. And Counselor Edwards mentioned, you know, having conversations about that study when they were in the very early phases of it. So what we had done is worked to try to put together a vehicle to shepherd funding to those very particular needs, and met with, with the administration around the idea with the mayor, around the idea as well as with the Director of Economic Development, and the Director of ARPA Recovery, and started just sharing, you know, what we were looking to do and how we were looking to solve or bring some solutions to this problem. So what we've come up with is this Housing Trust Fund. As you can see from the fact sheet, the mission of the fund is really multi-fold. There are, I think, several ways that this vehicle can be used in the years ahead to address some of the issues that we've discussed. And that is one of the things that I like about it. It is definitely nimble in its ability to continue to respond to the needs as we know they'll change over the years. But the mission of it will be to provide for the creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and adaptive rehabilitation of housing in the city of Springfield specifically for the benefit of low and moderate income households. Activities of the trust could include, but are not limited to, grants to support exterior and foundational renovations for eligible homeowners, incentives for reuse or new construction of single and multifamily housing, and in the future perhaps expanded first-time homebuyer assistance. The key to this, I think, is in the administration and the makeup of the Advisory Committee. The goal is really to make sure that we have a professional and diverse group of individuals with expertise in these areas, and we know those exist in the city as well as municipal representatives, really guiding the priorities of the trust fund. And so to that point, this legislation would establish the governance of the trust fund with an advisory committee. That advisory committee would include the Mayor of Springfield or their designee, the President of the City Council, or a city councillor designated by the President, the Director of Housing for the City of Springfield, two Springfield residents, at least one of whom must be a tenant, so an individual who is renting, two representatives of Springfield nonprofit organizations that are focused on housing resources, an additional resident who is a professional in the field of housing or real estate, and an additional resident who is a professional in the field of banking or finance. And then in terms of administration of the trust fund, we, you know, understood that obviously there has to be somebody to run the day-to-day. There has to be somebody to, you know, help put everything together, handle applications, handle the administrative side. And the Springfield Redevelopment Authority has stepped up to the plate to be that administrative entity. I think it's a great opportunity for the Redevelopment Authority to go more into housing. And I also think it means that we don't have to put together an entirely new administrative entity to put forth this Housing Trust Fund, which means we save on overhead costs and more funds can be directed directly to residents. In terms of funds for the Housing Trust Fund, I think there's two things to consider. One is, I think it's important to create this so that it can go after funds in the future. But in the immediate short term, we expect that if the legislation is passed and the members are appointed, that they would then work together with the SRA to submit a plan for American Rescue Plan funding, to provide initial seed funding. We also expect in the future that the city could utilize Community Development Block grants, state and federal housing grants, and any other funds that are determined by the mayor and the city council with the input of that advisory committee. So that is the, that is the broad vision of the Housing Trust Fund and why we've elected to put forward this legislation. I will say that in our conversations with the SRA, the Economic Development Department, and the Mayor's Office, the first and foremost mission that we had expected the Housing Trust Fund would go after are those grants to support exterior and foundational renovations for eligible homeowners. That is an immediate thing that can be addressed. We know we have a very large amount of housing stock with low-income homeowners and senior homeowners who are not able to make some of those repairs that need to be made. And we think that will go a long way to bringing some support for them. So I expect that would be the first initiative. But Housing Trust Funds, as they exist, really have the ability to go much further. And I think that as we continue to see funding become available at the state and federal level, this could be an opportunity to continue to build on that in the future again for additional housing support. So I, I think I'll pause there and go ahead and take questions from councilors. The only other thing I would say is, there was a pilot done just around the exterior renovations and grants. There was a, there was a pilot done in the McKnight neighborhood where I live, by the Economic Development Department for exterior renovation grants. They did 13 houses, and there was, those 13 were picked by lottery, but there was massive interest, and the projects that have been done thus far really have been beneficial. People have been very happy with them. And so I think that shows the need. This would obviously expand that much further and allow for, you know, non-historic and a broader application across the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Welcome, Counselor Whitfield. I see your hand is raised. Please, your question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a great initiative, but I do, with my finance lens on, want to know if you did a cost-benefit analysis on how much it would cost to run such a program? And the reason that I asked that is because we talked about using ARPA funds to run the administration of it. And I'm already concerned about how much ARPA funds is being used to run administration of other programs and not going back directly to the community that was most disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic or the virus itself. And I just want to make sure that we're not adding more administrative costs to that bucket of money because it's dwindling so fast to, to another resource of administration.
I agree with you, Counselor Whitfield, and that's why I'm glad that the SRA would administer the fund using, you know, I expect the tools that they already have. The advisory committee would be unpaid, and I would expect that funds granted to it would be utilized specifically to go directly to Springfield residents.
Actually, no disrespect to, I'm gonna get to Counselor Perez in a second and then also file up with Counselor Govan. Counselor Whitfield, may I ask? Amanda Pham could just speak on behalf of the SRA and their understanding of what this collaboration would look like?
Yes, please.
Okay, Amanda, please, if you will.
Evening, everybody. Yeah, the SRA does look forward to administering these. We want to make sure it's a sound trust. With as much of the money going to the residents of the city, I mean, it's, it's for, you know, improvement of housing stock and to really benefit and transform for the residents of Springfield, so. Our mission would definitely be to, to not have as much administrative cost and as much money to the citizens as possible.
We've also been joined by Counselor Hurst. Welcome, sir. Would you like to add anything or add to, comment, response?
No, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that because a lot of times, folks that are disadvantaged by anything, a hurricane or COVID-19, usually the funding that goes out helps folks build like disadvantaged prop, properties for disadvantaged people, but they don't really directly get a benefit from the funding that should go directly toward them. So I'm, I just want to make sure that those that are disadvantaged get an economic benefit out of the money that's being spent and not like, so, not so much as contractors and things like that that might not be in that population. And so if there's any way we could get a cost-benefit analysis on how much it would be to run such a program, that would be great for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the perspective, Counselor Whitfield. And Mr. Chair, if I might, I think the other thing that's relevant about this, Counselor, because I agree with you about the issue of money not making it where it should all too often. And one of the things that I think would be valuable about this is because the advisory committee would include so many individuals who are community-based, I think that its ability to connect with community members will be improved. And I also would hope that in the future, we might be able to look at some of the existing housing funds that exist in the city and how those are administered, because I think this could be a valuable tool to push those out in a more inclusive way because of the community-based nature of the advisory committee.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Perez?
Yes, I just have a comment. I have been a housing director for over 25 years now. One of the problems that I see and I'm a prior recommendation that we expand for first-time homebuyers assistance, but we don't have a homebuyer for rental. And I think we need to start discussing that specifically in a line item for the rental part of it, because we leave it overall for first-time owners. And seeing the need of housing, we should be working more with the rentals itself. I have people that are able to, to buy a home, but because of the direction they take when it comes to the financial, needing literacy and all education and all that, we should have some, and I always have said it, a program not for the first-time homebuyers only, but address those issues as well, a line item for rental as first-time owners in the, in the language. That's the only thing that I see per recommendation of, and I have expressed this because I said at the COC, where is the continual care for the city of Springfield. And I have not seen that we have, we always have it very open to first-time homeowners, but we have not dedicated a line item for rental. It's just only a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much, and I thank you, Counselor Perez, for that comment, because that's exactly where I was thinking about going with this. This is a very good idea. I would totally support something like this happening. And I would add that Wayfinders, I don't know if everybody knows this, but Wayfinders has money, as we know. And what they do is the renters that they have, they might get behind on their rent. And like every three to six months, there's like $5,000 given to them to pay back their rent. I wonder if there might be a way where we could take that $5,000 and do like Counselor Perez says, and maybe educate them on homeownership, and do case management to help them realize that they can be homeowners as opposed to renters, and figure out a way to help them not get behind on their rent like they've been doing and kind of like continue the the cycle of poverty that they might be in, because every three to six months, they'll give $5,000 for their back rent, but then three to six months later, they'll still be in the same place. So I'm just wondering if there might be a way where we can figure out how to work with Wayfinders and the Housing Trust to help those renters become first-time homeowners while at the same time, you know, doing the case management piece, doing the, you know, the counseling and education piece to help them, like I said, realize the dream of being homeowners. So that was my only comment that I wanted to make, and thank you so much, Counselor Letterman. This is a great idea.
Thank you.
Counselor Hurst, which, sorry.
I just wanted to respond to Counselor Govan quickly.
Sure, go ahead.
Just relative to your point, Counselor Govan, and Counselor Perez as well, both excellent points. And I, I think that the nice part about bringing the structure of a Housing Trust Fund beyond the actual technical piece of housing money and distributing it, I think that having this group that will theoretically, and you know, if passed, be regularly convening around these issues with representation from the city council and organizations that have been mentioned, I think will be great. Because it'll allow for these conversations to be taking place regularly and with intent. You know, whereas I think oftentimes these funds, even the funds that we do see out, and certainly our city staff does excellent work, and we appreciate their work. But it's being sort of administered, right? It needs, you need a little bit more community input. I think we see that conversation come up all the time around city funds, and I think this will give the opportunity for those funds to be, for those discussions to happen on a regular basis. I just wanted to clarify, Counselor Perez, were you saying issues for first-time renters getting in like first-last and security? Or were you saying targeting renters to help move them to the homeownership level?
Targeting rental. All the language that I read is only for first-time homeowners, but it's a broad, you, we need to type that up and, and just have work with that population, specify in the language that population as well. Because when you open it out, and I've seen it, for first-time homeowners, it's just open. I just want to see that gap, because it's a big gap. My colleague said, I have seen checks for $10,000 that goes to landlord. We need to tighten up that gap, and if we don't put in the language for rental and just leave it as first-time homeowners, we're not tightening the gap and not, without putting that language into it.
Counselor Whitfield, I see your hand is raised again.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, I want to try to understand what Counselor Perez is saying. So are you saying, Counselor, that there should be, funding should be used also to help homeowners that own rental properties?
You see, first-time homeowners, when it apply, anyone could apply. I would like to see in that plan, the rental, working with the rental and the population of the rental, of specifying for rentals, how do we could start? First-time homebuyers could be anyone, but the rent, right now I have a population that's able to pay a mortgage. But because it's.
So renters, not people that own rental units?
No, 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 rental. That are renting. I don't see in the language of the city or anywhere to specify that, and that's a need right now in the city. Because if our reality, in, 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 in my analysis as working as a housing director, let me tell you, the rental pays more than the, even the people that are paying a mortgage in this city. And it's like that, my colleague, Saida Govan, has said, why are we cutting checks of $15,000, $10,000 for those people that are renting? And we don't have a language, and we need to work with those people and get them to the next level because of the need of housing that we have in this city.
So you're talking about like the Wayfinders program, we paying, they're paying to catch people up on their rent or whatever to the landlords. Are you talking about those, that population?
No, yes, the, yeah, that population, not paying directly to the landlord. We need to provide a program for rental people, separate them from that population, work with them, educate them, and get them to the next level.
Next level of homeownership, you mean?
Right.
Correct, correct.
If they, if they want to go to that next level, because some folks just really don't, right?
Yeah, but this, okay.
Because of a lack of education.
Exactly, exactly.
They might think they can't. Like, that's what Counselor Perez is saying, because the language is always for first-time homebuyers or, you know, other people, but not the renters. And when Wayfinders comes and gives them a $15,000 check, instead of saying, oh, you could use this money as a down payment on a home, and you could have your own home. And nobody tells them that, because they're stuck in that cycle of poverty that this country has, you know, created and continues to perpetuate with those kind of systems. So that's what I'm thinking about. Thank you, Counselor Perez and Counselor Whitfield.
I'm sorry, thank you, because I'm a little confused, because most first-time homebuyers come from a rental situation, or they live at home. So that is the rental population, and there are education programs, there's first-time homebuyer programs, and Springfield Neighborhood Housing and Wayfinders, so I guess I'm still a little bit confused.
Yeah, and I understand your confusion.
I'm sorry, Counselor Letterman, I'm just trying to understand.
But the language itself, we have to put in the language that we have rental people that pays rent, and they could be in, in the language itself, not leave it so broad. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, I'm speaking about the language. So we could target that population and work with their needs. When you say first-time homeowners, anyone could be, but let's put in that language in there. We addressing that population that's getting $10,000, $25,000. I, I see them. And we just, we just put in a bandage to it. I'm gonna be realistic, it's what we doing. And it's like you saying with the administrative monies that goes outside the window. That's the same thing we, we are doing with the people that are renting. So we need to put a language in there, because we need to address those issues if we're gonna have this committee.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to just, I, I think I understand what Counselor Perez and the comments around the renter versus the first-time homebuyer. The Springfield Partners, Springfield Neighborhood Housing Services and Wayfinders, I believe to certain degrees, their funding sources are directed for the sole, not sole purpose, but as a subset of how they get their funding is to make sure that people stay in a home and have housing. So there's nothing wrong with us, that they get their money usually from the state. I think this plan that we're trying to put out for right now is for homeowners and initially, it would be expanded. If you notice, the last item is expanded, first-time home assistance. The initial money that we would hope to get out onto the streets would be to assist people who are in homes already, but are struggling to maintain the integrity of their homes. And so the thing is, is hopefully if, you know, if the initial money that would come out would be for the foundation works, for porches, the things that code enforcement might drive by and cite somebody for. And for low-income people who are actually homeowners, moderate-income people who are homeowners who are struggling, they can pay their mortgage, they can pay the taxes on the house. What they can't afford is to put a new roof on the house. They can't afford to have a porch replaced because it's dangerous. Replace the stairs, or paint the house, do those things that would improve that, that, the value of the home. I think that the Wayfinder doesn't get a lot of money from the city of Springfield to help people transition from being a renter to a homeowner. They get most of that money would come from the state, and I think that this program that we're proposing here is certainly at some point could evolve where it can help first-time homebuyers, whether they are renters or not. And I certainly get the ideal, if you can give somebody $10,000 to catch their rent up, and that money goes directly to the landlord, the purpose of that $10,000 at that point is to keep them from being evicted. Whereas if it's, and if they're in good standing in terms of their rent, and you have $10,000 that you could offer them as a down payment to cover closing costs, then that would certainly be a different plan. But I just, you know, Counselor Hurst, Whitfield, I'll get to, Counselor Hurst, would you, you haven't spoken, would you like to comment, please?
Just, just, um, two, one question, in terms of have we, have we thought about how it is that we're gonna advertise this particular program to the individuals that we want to benefit? And then I guess the second component of that is, are we targeting those individuals who have already been caught up and caught up with code enforcement first? Is there a way in which we can identify those individuals? So we're actually, so we know that we're addressing those individuals who are most in need and who potentially might be in a position to lose their house if it gets any further. Are there any plans for that, or is that, or is it a little premature?
At this point, probably a little bit premature in the sense that we, we have put this together as an ideal and a thought, vetted it with the administration and Law Department, et cetera. And we're bringing it to the council for exactly what is going on here now, to try to get some ideals on how it could work, on how it needs to be tweaked. But in terms of how to market it, I certainly, an impediment quite often to getting public money is people who have liens for code and zoning, I mean, code issues in their homes. So yeah, those are the types of things that I think once we establish, pass the ordinance, get it established, then with the appointing authority or oversight being the SRA, the council president being appointing a city councillor to sit on the committee, the representatives from the, you know, as, as you see from the little cheat sheet that was went out, you know, having somebody who represent renters, who actually lives in a rental unit, and then having a homeowner, and then people who are involved in the banking and stuff. That's where we would have the, the ideal of how to market it, who to market it to, how to fund it would come from that committee, making a recommendation back to the committee, the whole, and to the administration on how it should work, and hopefully working in collaboration with the SRA when utilizing their talent pool and expertise in the housing market.
God, it would just be nice if we could, if we could try and find ways around the issues that, that you just highlighted with respect to individuals being to take, being able to take advantage of these monies. I mean, the reason why there, many of them are in the position that they're in in terms of being ticketed and, you know, potentially owing taxes is because, you know, they can't make those critical repairs that I think you all are trying to address through this ordinance. So I don't, I don't know how you do it, but certainly something to consider. You know, if we could target those individuals first, that, that, that would be nice, and it would make sure that the money's going to those individuals who need it the most. Just a thought.
I know that unfortunately, there's the Healthy Home Program, which exists in my ward, and I believe in Maria's, in certain parts of Maria's ward, dresses those types of issues. And I'm not exactly understanding how, I don't know the specific details of how they manage it. But that is, in, in my ward, many people have who have had what would have been potential code violations, have been able to apply and get money through that program. That money that came in was specific for Brightwood and for parts of Ward 3. So it doesn't extend into, you know, Indian Orchards, 16 Acres, East Springfield and other parts of the city. But they do have a plan and a blueprint for how to do that, and I think that's something that we can consider as we move forward. And, you know, the reason we, you know, we brought this and are having this committee meeting just so that we can try to work out some of the ideals and, and talk about some of this. But the main purpose is that when we come back to the committee of the whole, that we would not, we would have a better, clearer understanding, and hopefully, you know, in an ideal world, we would have had 13 councillors listening to this now. And so that when we go back, we be prepared to pass first step, send it to committee, and then be, you know, on, on the path to getting it passed in this fiscal year before June 29th and moving into the next fiscal. uh in this fiscal uh year uh before June twenty ninth and moving into the next fiscal year and when there's the budgetary issues of both the SRA and the city will be under consideration. Um, but Counsel Whitfield, your hand is up, I see.
Okay, so first I wanted to say Springfield Neighborhood Housing, as far as I know, does not help pay back rent. So I just wanted to clarify that.
No, no, no.
Okay, they mainly educate. Um, I know New North Citizens Council does and Wayfinders does um, and things like that, but I just wanted to clarify, they're more education service for renters and they help um, um renters going to buy homes um, in um, with first time home buyers programs and also obtain like five oh five oh three loans and things like that. So they're more of an education type facility that if you go through them, you can get incentives for folks uh for other organizations to pay your closing costs and things like that. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And then I personally like the aspect um that Counselor Letterman spoke about as far as helping um individuals who traditionally cannot get funding to fix roofs and in the historical district that because it's so expensive, may not be able to afford to get porches and things like that done uh because there's not a lot of program, especially for moderate income folks that don't qualify for the city's low income programs or other low income programs. But they can't afford to maybe fix their roof or they might have credit score problems that's um um hindering them from getting a traditional loan or things like that. That's the population that I see is really struggling and there's no real resources out there for them. I know that we did get a grant in the city of Springfield to try to help um those type of individuals fix their homes, but it's still such a cumbersome process. So if I can ask for anything, I would love that the process not be so cumbersome and the layperson would be able to fill out application to obtain this funding source. But those moderate income folks that's just over the low income threshold, but not nearly close to being rich or in the wealthy population cannot afford to fix these situations. And one thing that happens when code enforcement um gives them a ticket or they're involved, then code enforcement looks for everything. So now they're trying to dig up all the other issues that come along. That is also a problem. So we can get enough in the Springfield Housing Trust to help these particular individuals and seniors that cannot afford to fix their properties in their homes because they're on a fixed income. And I know they do fall in the low income category, but sometimes they just don't know what to do or they, they don't qualify for whatever reason. Are the populations that I'm most concerned about because I get a lot of those calls like, how can you help me? My credit score is bad. But I don't fall into any of these program income guidelines cuz I don't have children, you know, things like that, like uh, that's the population, Counselor um Edwards and Counselor Letterman, that I would like definitely to see help in, in those communities.
I think those, those, many of the questions that you just mentioned were discussed. I brought up directly to the mayor and to TJ about the, how the process needs not to be so cumbersome. Uh, and the other thing is that I was concerned with was um, when we have programs like this, uh, the threshold of disqualification is so low in many cases, something minor. The ability to be able to take and, and interject some little bit of empathy or at least common sense into the application process, make it so, let so that people who uh can easily apply and then having resources available to work with them so that if they're they miss it because of one document, that doesn't completely exclude them uh being able to work with them. So that was part of our conversation, presentation to the administration when we put it forward. And uh, and, and, and everything that I'm hearing, it doesn't, you know, a- as I'm listening to the comments and, and, and now I'm not hearing anybody saying this is not a good ideal. What I'm hearing is people are tweaking and thinking of ways to make it even better moving forward, but uh, and I'm hopeful that when we bring this back to the committee to hold, when it comes out onto the floor, that it'll be the same type of enthusiasm to support passage of it uh and, and then moving forward with it in, in a quick manner so that we can get it out, get it fixed and hear all the different suggestions on how to make it work in through um the proper channels and with the collaboration of the Springfield Redevelopment Authority.
Uh, i- if I might, Mr. Chairman, I can't raise my hand cuz I'm a co-host, so I
Um, please. Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I just wanted, I, I, I appreciate Counselor Whitfield's points and I, I think we're all on the same page. I think the moderate income piece is really important to understand and I had a very similar conversation with um uh Counselor Curran just before this meeting, he wasn't able to be on, but uh, we know there are a lot of folks who are, are just getting by and they're just outside of oftentimes the eligibility faction. Those individuals are not gonna come up with ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars for major home improvement um out of pocket. It's not possible when you're, you know, feeding your kids, paying, paying bills and uh, and dealing with those issues. And I, I think, you know, I won't speak for you know, all, all of us, but I know many of us would struggle if we were in a situation where all of a sudden we had, uh, you know, had to come up with that kind of money. So um, that's definitely the impetus behind putting specifically in the mission of it uh that it would be targeted for low and moderate income uh households. And, and with that said, I think the specific details would need to be worked out um by the advisory committee and the SRA board. Um, but their charge is, is very much in that vein. Uh, and the fact that the council will have representation there as they continue to develop the program over the years, I think is valuable as well. So I I think the sky is really the limit with this type of entity cuz we're doing more than just creating one program. We're creating a, a real um framework uh for it to continue to grow. And I think back to a, a study somebody sent me from nineteen eighty-five of, of housing in Springfield. And I'm gonna be honest, it had a lot of the same things that the Donahue Institute study had in it. It had a lot of the same things that we're talking about today and it had a, a lot of good ideas. Um, but in reading it and comparing it to today, um, not as many of those good ideas happened as should have. Uh, and I think we'd be in a better position if they did. So I'm hopeful that uh this is something that can be a, a, a living organization that can grow and can really uh, you know, bring uh some needed resources. We know there's no uh one size fits all approach or no golden ticket to our problems, but uh I'm hopeful that this will be a, a feasible path forward.
I love this idea. I have to hop off, but if you would be so kind and add me to the ordinance, I would definitely appreciate it. I support it a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
We'd be happy to do that. Well, and welcome, uh, Counsel Whitfield. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve Roach has his hand up and it's instrumental. He may want to make some comments.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I do. I, I, I want to speak to the efficiency of the process here and what we're setting up here. So when we first discussed this with uh Counsel Letterman, uh, we talked about actually filing legislation, which if if you file what goes on Beacon Hill, that can drag out, take a long time and get changed. So by going through the general laws, we found an alternative where if you do a local acceptance of a chapter, then we could move forward and do this initiative on our own without the requirement to go to the general court or anyone else. We can do this in-house with the city council. And so as part of the work that law department did is we went to the fiscal experts and we said to them, take a look at this and tell us if there's any hidden costs we need to be aware of. And the efficiency here in relying on the redevelopment authority rather than creating a whole new entity is, is uh multiple. For example, we're exempt from payment of taxes based on uh or measured by income. This process exempt from the payment of taxes based on property, not subject to income taxes on a federal or state level. Um, the, there would be no requirement to obtain a federal tax ID um, and also deal with the Department of um, Department of Revenue. So in fact, one of the nice things is whether it's a, a grant from the state or an individual, because this is a city tax ID number, it's a charitable gift. And also we have to do to allow those individual payments to come in because there are people who want to donate, et cetera. We just have to register with the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and that will put us into a spot for, for um public disclosure, basically. So I think both in terms of how we get to the point of having this ordinance ready to go as well as the system we're, we're setting up, when I heard about the concerns about overhead administrative costs, we've really streamlined this by going this route. So I, I commend the, the counselor uh and you know, we're happy to assist and answer any questions as needed.
Um, thank you. Uh, that was great. I really appreciate it and, and I hope that any uh questions will, you know, give you a chance to think about new questions. We will be presenting this at the next regular council meeting. Um, I don't know who can went up, came first, whether it was Perez or Gavon, but Counsel.
That's fine. No, I just wanted to, I, I'm just add, you could add me to the ordinance. I mean, this is a battle that I've been battling almost twenty years plus. Um, and I think this is a great idea, um, this ordinance. Um, it's a check, it, it, it puts everyone on check, um, you, you know, um, when it comes in this conversation and, and, and it's a great, great idea. So please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gavon?
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Um, I wanted to say the same thing. Um, I really like the idea. This is something that is a long time coming and I think that could do a lot to help the community um, and our residents. And of course, my focus is on the expanded first time home buyer assistance program where I think we if we could focus somehow on working with wayfinders and with, you know, anyone else who does the um emergency rental assistance to try to help, you know, some of those people come out of poverty and, you know, show their children that they can have a home, they can have a backyard because that really makes people want to go to college and makes them want to do more things than uh supposed to living, you know, in an apartment. But I really like it is uh add me on to the um, um, the cause and I'd be glad to help in any way that I can.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I'm really excited and I really, uh, let me just tell you how much I I appreciate the fact that, you know, I'm, I'm never afraid to have, um, you know, a debate over how do we need to make things better, but I'm really excited the fact that I've got, you know, three counselors uh and who are heard what we presented, the work that we put into it and to have you guys sign on. We really thank you. Uh, Attorney Roach, uh, thank you. Um, we brought this to the administration, we worked with the law department and I really do have great appreciation to TJ, to Tim Sheehan and to, uh, and I didn't mention um Attorney Tom Moore as well. Uh, and to my colleague, Jesse Letterman, uh, Counselor Whitfield, I mean, I mean, also Brown, uh, our council president, Williams, to everybody involved. And I hope we have the same type of enthusiasm when we bring it back. You guys are, um, please talk to the counselors who weren't here. Let them know what we're coming down the pike with and hopefully uh you guys can share with them that this is um, it's a good thing and we need their support. We would like to, we, we would have had it out, presented to you last year if it hadn't been for COVID and so many other distractions, but we're prepared now. We've done our due diligence. We think there's and once the committee is established, it can figure out and um all the exact details and where they need to be. There was nothing that was said today that um, that makes me want to shy away from supporting this. So that being said, um, is there any other questions or comments from anyone about this issue? And uh, so that being said.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Edwards, for, for calling the meeting and, and for your support uh throughout the process. Um, you know, we've also consulted uh some community organizations in, in talking about this. We, we've talked uh with folks at Wayfinders, uh, folks at Springfield Neighborhood Housing Services, Springfield No One Leaves. Uh, you know, folks that are involved on the ground uh in this and, and have heard positive comments. So um, I do want to thank Amanda again for coming on. It's not a, it's not a small thing that the SRA is willing to bring this under their under their administration. We, you know, when we initially were thinking about it, we were thinking of it under uh Echo Dev. Um, but it was, it was really such an ask that it needed, it needed the type of administration that, that the SRA can provide. So we're really grateful uh to them and, and to Steve for going back and forth with me. Just on the timeline, this is gonna be on for Monday's meeting. I am very hopeful that we will get to it before ten o'clock uh and be able to vote on it uh because we won't have another regular meeting until the end of March. And so it will need two steps for passage. It is an ordinance. And I'm hopeful that we can, that we can streamline that, uh, which is the purpose of having this committee meeting because uh we want to be able to start seeing this funded uh in the late spring, early summer and actually be able to get uh the, these resources out to folks. So I'm, I'm hopeful with our new three new cosponsors and our four original sponsors and some of the other conversations we've had that we'll be able to push this forward on, on Monday. And that still gives you a whole month if there's any other questions or amendments, you know, we'll have time.
And just be aware, as we talk to our colleagues, uh, Monday's meeting will only be, of course, depending on where we land on the agenda, would only actually be passing first step. First step, we, if we can pass first step, it would automatically go to the appropriate committee, probably general government for further vetting. So for counselors who have any reservations or as you talk to people, if there's a question that they can't quite give them, you know, the pause of recognizing that if we, we, the importance of getting first step passed and uh, and then there'll be plenty of time in the committee meeting to hash out other details. And, and also let me also echo uh my appreciation to the SRA and uh this fam as our, as an executive director and to our Attorney Roach. Thank you guys tremendously. I really appreciate every year help and uh as I said many times before, I got a master's degree in failure, all the success is because of the people around me. So very excited to have you people support this and be around me to help me look uh uh, be confident that this is a good thing moving forward. If there is no objections, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion made properly second, all in favor of adjournment. Thank you very much. Please.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Bye bye.
And uh, God bless everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.